Commissions, any or members of the county board commissioners are advised to involve their duty and society government ethics side of the end conflicts of interest or appearance of such conflict. Further, I am instructed to refrain from anticipating any minor kind of legal disboard of the county commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Mr. Commissioner.
That's great. Good day, everyone. Father, just thank you for this glorious day that you've given us. And Father, we're just so thankful for the blessings and gifts and opportunities you allowed us to have. Father, we ask that you just be with us and Father, and just guide us and just give us understanding. And Father, best of all, just to be with our families and be with our county, especially those who are sick and ill. Father, we ask that you just continue just to touch and heal their bodies and just be with them. And Father, we ask that you just continue just to bless us and just protect us and just watch over each and every one. Father, we're just so thankful, Lord, and precious and holy as night. Jesus Christ, bring your pardon.
On the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is a official meeting. I'd like to give this to all the high and forward in Grand County. Thank you for your service, Stephen.
We could add five A for approval of the resolution for Motel Plaza. And under ten discussion items, if we could add approval of some payments. One is for a clearing project on P and J Road. One is for the school. And I'll explain them when we get to them. And then one is for our attorney's payment. Just need approval of that.
I'm just going to put all of them ahead.
That's fine.
So, I want to approve the June 15th public carry on the 14th, especially that not taken next. Just saying. Motel Plaza Resolution. So, I should approve the resolution for Motel Plaza. How much do we need to reduce? Do you think about it?
If you don't mind, please turn it off, sir.
Coming forward for approval of our rewritten emergency operations plan. The last time our plan was revisited and rewritten was sometime in the early 2000s. The last official approval was 2004. So, we're a little bit, have been a little overdue for a complete revision of our emergency operations plan. This has been probably six or eight months in the works, even pre-Helen. But I think that we can, as a community, see the benefits of being required to have an operations plan. The parts of the plan that are for public consumption have been updated to the county website. Should have went live this afternoon and in approval. So, all we really need, and I have a copy of it, I'm always supposed to read the first 300 pages of it.
Yes.
So, you know, for me here. But I will send it to Kim electronic copy. If you're interested, there's also a hard copy that we maintain file for sending to county manager's office. It really changes nothing as far as our common operating procedure, just updates everything. This came about because, you know, we're 20 years into the old plan. And also yearly, as part of our performance evaluation from State North Carolina, they evaluate our plan and go through it. And they've been suggesting we get it updated. And finally, we just were able to pull the trigger and get that done. So, I've got the approval letter and the encircums and executives. We just need the board chair signature on it. We've got a copy for the clerk. It's pleasing to the board to move forward, and this will be our commercial operations plan for the county.
We need the board to say that.
Yes, it has to be accepted by the board.
Does it remind you of the emergency operations plan? Voting.
One other thing, just to get on your radar. We have been awarded the second installment of Homeland Security Grant program in the amount of $73,000. It's the part B to what we got this time last year. This is a past third grant. There's no maximum funds or anything. It's for equipment purchase for the domestic preparedness region, which is from Buffalo County West. We have representation on that board now. And this particular equipment, once it's approved by the domestic preparedness region, will be assigned to a different county within the region. This is just the caveat to being able to get the underwater ground from Olson on. We had to sponsor the second part of this and do the legwork for somebody else's equipment like they did for ours. So, just to let you know that's on the horizon, and there we are. And ask at some point for that past three funds to be approved so we can go in and spend that amount. But it has been approved.
Chair, good evening, commissioners. Good evening, everyone. A few things to go over. We don't have a lot to present too much tonight. Couple of good things that we're doing and progress on some stuff. I'll start at the top of Project Manager Report, which you should have on your desk. It is the Justice Center, Chair Owens, you and I have discussed, presentation that we'll work with, just so everybody knows, and the rest of the board members. We brought on LS3P, so I talked to architecture firm LS3P, so I talked to Scott Donald today. And we're working on a presentation to go to the school board on trying to coordinate with the board's decision on a school, a piece of school property that would work with their new elementary school. Try to work those together, get utilized the best options for the county, for the Justice Center, while also being able to work with the school when they move into their new elementary school facility. We should, or Miss Scott should have this presentation either tomorrow, worst case Thursday, for us to go over in preparation for that Tuesday, I think it's Tuesday, December 3rd, Board of Elections, Board of Education meeting, to be able to present that. Question was, I told them I, not really my call, but I would prefer they were there to be, they were offering to present to the board. Just leave that up to you earlier today. Yeah, I think it's a good option for them to present that. And it would deal with whatever campus, you know, changes that we may talk about with what's existing and for the new elementary school. Should have a lot of options after that meeting with the Board of Education going forward. And we'll talk, soon as we see that report, we'll get with Ms. Kim.
Okay.
Move forward with that. I have two, senior center kitchen expansion, good news. We thought it was probably going to be another two weeks on the shed building, but it is on the way to more, apparently, as long as weather is causing issues. So, we'll be able to put that install a shed and be working to get that contract close out. We've went back to Commerce several times, and it's just a matter of such a slow process working through and the red department within Commerce on the backup generator asking for funds. So far, we haven't been approved for those additional funds. Unfortunately, we will have to close this contract down because we will have to close out the grant funding. We did get, we did apply proactively to extending the closeout for the grant into March of '25 because of losing the building in everyone in Tennessee when the Helen hit. And they were, of course, that was a justification to be able to do that. So, we moved it out. We have a little bit of time, but I keep sending Commerce and our contract representative, hey, we'd sure like to get that additional fund so we can put the backup generator up there. So, we'll continue to work at it. But we are limited at a contract closeout. We'll have to close that contract out. If we, just for your awareness, if we have to close that contract out, we would probably have to go out, if we're interested in doing a generator, and do bids. Now, we can still ask for grant money, but we'll probably have to bid it out, or give quotes at least, in the informal bidding range to be able to make that happen. Likely, we'll be a little more expensive than what we're going to be able to get it in at this point now. So, there's a little bit of unfortunate-ness to that, but we can only turn as quick as state government will, will let us turn them. But we'll continue to ask for that money and look forward on that senior center project. I'll skip one down to item four. We'll come back to this in jail bid. There's some information here that we'll go over. I'll just give a brief update of a couple of projects real quick. The last one is the number six. Item six is the Dublin supplemental neighborhood revitalization where should be getting bids for those tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. We'll be able to report to the board what we get at that point. Obviously, if we don't get three bids, just, I had to, we would be able to do one more time, and then go from there. So, bids are due for those two homes for Metro Natoro tomorrow at 2:00. Moving back to item four, the jail bid. I received, during the re-bid, I received one bid, and I did not open it to the intent to let the county manager and the chair elected to bring it to the board, and you guys opened it. And there was a problem with therapy as well with the one bid. And so, I made contact with the contractor providing this. They didn't write out the right number. So, instead of being the written out $97,628, it's actually the written, the numerical number 134,254. He did send me that in an email that I provided you on your desk. His change to 134,0254. I would note that that is, if we remember the first bids, they were all under a hundred grand. Hundred grand is our budget, budget influence project. And that's an additional $36,626, which is an escalation of about 37% from where we originally started with this project, we wanted to put in this project. Which one?
Is that first bid?
The first bid was in October.
That had, yeah.
So, we waited about a month for the second bid. And that was, that's an escalation of about 37%. You have several options here as a, as a governing board. Obviously, that's a problem with a bid. Can be rejected. There's an option to go out for a third bid. You have an option to even, because, and I want to stress, the reason why we choose the formal bidding process is for full transparency for everything we do with taxpayer dollars. This is under that informal bid range, so we can decide to go out and just go get quotes and decide from there. There's an option. And all this, I would also like to work with Jay on, to see with whatever the board decides they want us to look into, make sure we're legally doing it. If we can self-perform, like we did those other contracts under my license, where you can reach a negotiation with this company for this contract. The stipulations do say that the only reason that you can, for the most part, the only reason you can reach a negotiation for the low responsive bidder would be if it's outside our budget range. That you can start adding engineering to try to get it with that little contractor, lowest responsive contractor to give you measure. Those are some of the options, and I would leave it up to the board to decide as to how they want to proceed forward. Of course, with Jay's recommendation, we'll have to.
Is there a potential to negotiate this lower?
I guess yes, there's probably always an option.
But if we can legally just close it out, that might be a cheaper option.
We already know our consulting fee, I'll have it in front of me, but it was included into the, into our budget number. Again, making sure that we're good to go with Jay, that's an option to go out and just talk to companies that we, that's our attractive bid and say, just give us a quote. It's within that 12 and under that other thousand in the informal bid range, where we can do that.
New discussion.
I'd like to have a very broad question.
Or a new discussion.
Yeah, that's what we did. That's not a, yeah, that's what I did as, working with a consultant, too.
Then you said there was an option of just talking to people and possibly telling them what our top dollar is for this project. That being an option.
Yeah, you could go out for quotes in the informal bid range, yes.
So, what we have budgeted could be discussed in such a thing. I might be against that. I think that might be the best path that we have. Not that any of them are just stellar, but even with our budget, that might be the best action that we could take at this point.
You want to put that in the motions this morning?
I will.
What is the motion exactly?
I make a motion that we have, as we have the option to discuss the amount of money that we had budgeted for this project, then we discuss that with the contractors, and then they can give us support. Did I get all that in, Jason?
I'm not sure I followed that.
Quote for?
Anything else? That you can say?
Just ask contractors for quotes to what they'll do. Our written scope of work for our specs, lead the work. Basically, that's an estimate. And obviously, if we go with an estimate, we just make sure for any contractor that we decide going to work with sees that they're going to go over that, or potentially go over that estimate they provided. This is where that little difference in the contracting, they just provide us why and how much. And that way, you as the board can approve any additional money. That's usually what you run into on a quote side of things.
And we make sure all, everybody that you speak with has the same information.
Of course, yes. So, just so the board's clear, too, if we're going to go out and talk to contractors about quotes, I'm instructed to reject this last bid issue that the commissioners have decided go a different route. Is that, are we in agreement with that?
No.
We need, we need to let, we need us to let this contractor know. That would be the proper way would be to do a bid, to have rejection of bids for the reason that there was a mistake in how they filled the form out again. Commissioners have elected to go a different route. Right, Jay, is that good?
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Do you, do you agree that's a feasible path to take at this point?
Yeah, I mean, you don't, didn't really have to go to bids on the scene.
Right.
Did it for the transparency, but it hasn't worked out. So, I think what Jason is proposing is what you need to do with this.
I do believe, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for your report tonight. Thank you. Anything on finance?
Okay, so our finance director has sickness in her house, so she's not here. We're still continuing to work on the audit and getting them caught up. Both with, LGC will be here tomorrow to meet with Stacy and I, and I think maybe Chairman Elms. And then next week, we'll be making meeting with Jack Horton again. We've got a lead on a finance officer to work here in the office with Stacy, not two or three days a week. So, we're moving right along. And so, that was good news. But she will hopefully get on the boat as well and be back to work. Yes, Michelle, if you'd like.
Good evening, commissioners. I hope everyone is well. I had just a couple of points that I wanted to bring before you tonight and get your feedback on. If you remember back in September, we came and did workshop term with the commissioners and kind of talked about the day and out of different things that are happening at 5:00 and discussed the idea of that time about wanting to pursue the opportunity to look toward a new grocery store in Grand County. But we've not come up on that. So, we didn't know in the middle of September. We definitely knew by the end of September that we need to do something. And so, we are going to continue to pursue that. But as you can imagine, the project of that size is always going to require that we have county government involved. Because when we start planning and doing those kind of projects, we will need to be on the same team and having input from the county and also support and backing from the county to do that. So, we have talked with Josh Carpenter from Southwestern Commission about sitting down with us and helping to see what our next steps would be. But we would like to form a committee to help us start working on this project, and we would not just have someone representing the county government to be involved in that process so that we don't put in a lot of work and all of a sudden say, oh, no, that's not worth it. So, we would like to have that upfront. You can talk about that amongst yourselves, about which land is going to go to the slot. Because it will be fun. Next thing is, we have just recently received some funding in the digital literacy and digital opportunities portion of artwork that we do. We are going to be trying to form a plan for Grand County as far as digital opportunities, and that includes everything from trying to increase broadband access to teaching literacy, to going out and helping people get internet into their homes, to providing devices. It's a very large scope that we're able to work with. This is something that we have been called together. There's already, there's five of us in the community that are actually working on this, five different groups. But we also would like to have county government involved in that, because when you start trying to create policies for a community, you guys were the, were the votes, folks. So, I know when we were here before, at some point that we had discussed, and I think that you all offered up Jacob as the, as the sacrifice at that time about working on those things. I can see he's still happy about it. But we need someone that is going to be able to have a little bit of time to sit down with us and help us think through this process, because you probably know a lot of things that we don't know about needs in the community, and we may know some things that you don't know about needs in the community. So, I think it would be better if we could work together from the very beginning. We probably will not start on this project until after the first of the year, but I just wanted to get it on your radar so that you can have time to try and discuss who you think would be a good fit for that, because we would really appreciate your help and your support. We would like to return back that to you as well.
I think Commissioner Williams said, volunteer to sit on the grocery store committee.
We've got to approve the pile from Ted 246.90. We need to approve the one in largest, $230,000, and then we need to still get this on. Make sure we're, eventually, we'll promise, eventually, we'll promise. We have to agree to the, on that. Your master's to approve that.
So.
It's your second.
Same.
On paper. Got a contract with Valley River that we need to review.
Yes. I feel the, what we have, the individual right, so if y'all just look at it, be ready. You want me to, Valley River here, so if you're Shander speaking, y'all can next meeting, I'll be glad to do that.
I've got a question about that. In section one, it says that the rest of Grand County will pay a sum of $20,000 for July 1st, 2024, to June 3rd, 2025, and monthly installments of $5,000 per month.
Yes, that's quarterly. I just, this was the same contract that Valley River had in 2018.
I just always look, how much?
Yeah.
Get out.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is the two things I was looking. Feel free to leave that for our next meeting.
Okay. $20,000, $5,000. It's $5,000.
We got to approve the pile from Ted 24 for the activity bus minus $36,224.17. I should approve that.
I should.
For a second. On paper. I should approve the pile from Ted 2124 for the sales tax, sales tax expenditure through the school, sorry, $4,800. For a second.
Same.
On paper. Giltham and Dance Streets, we'll give them their cashing out, and by Wednesday, down there, whatever, you get a holiday, you cover it. You find out what she will say about that?
No, she is, is asking for help, so if anybody knows, anybody, any churches that would like to donate to the old town, you seen this ready, Charlie?
Do you know if they sent Millers out, all the churches they can this year?
She did send Son Millers out, and I'm assuming they went to the churches.
We don't.
Okay.
We need to read one, read one to the travel children, thank you, 111724, John Washington, Virginia.
Same.
On paper. Read for, hard enough to wait to travel children, thank you, 1245. He summed up locally, regulatory programs and environmental.
For accreditation, Germanels, they have to have approval that there have been no changes made.
On those policies.
On those policies, and there have not been any changes. On those policies, and there have not been any changes.
Got it, is that two thousand plus four, two thousand six, two and a half, Shuffish?
Yes, sir, we had had them previously, seven, one at seven thousand and one at four thousand. I called Cody George today, and he said if we could reduce that to three thousand each and readvertise.
The motion to approve that price change through the sub-posted.
Yes, sir.
I'm dinner, the late will be probably, but if you plan to attend, I would be happy to, if you bring a cover dish sometime.
Okay, so we received an estimate for the clearing of the one eighty P and J road, this is the property for the agriculture center, agriculture center and the fitness center. So there's six, five to seven acres is what they'll be clearing, and the quote to do it was sixty-five hundred. This money is in the budget in the capital projects of recreation, so we're not asking for any more monies, I just need approval to pay the bill. All right, the next one is I have purchase orders on the Grand County schools, they will, they have changed some locks with CD lock services. And the amount in total is two thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars and forty cents, this will be paid with their sales tax base. And the last one is our bill from our attorney, so we actually have two, and the total for the bill is twenty-six, nine, twenty, so that's probably a long time. And I need approval, I do need approval to pay those two statements. You did receive a card thanking you from the honorable Judge Tessa Sellers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at Tuesday night's meeting, I appreciate the job each of you do, serving the people of Grand County, and I look forward to working with each of you in the future. From yours, Tessa Sellers.
I have a couple of things for both sessions, they're both very short. You'll only have to take a bow.
There's nothing else, I'll take you by the gullible both sessions, you got one forty-three, we have a theme on eleven, eight, one, three, five, six. Press for confidential information, how you mind, or any personnel contracts. Is your second.